The meeting is called back to order at 6:39 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion and a second that the board approves the May 27, 2025 agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? May I please have a motion and a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? May I please have a motion and a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund status or revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending March 31, 2025 be approved?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments?
I didn't see that. No, Aaliyah.
So moved.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All those in favor and none opposed? Okay, we are on special reports.
Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to begin this evening with special reports. We have two. One is going to be our textbook recommendations. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Maloney so that she can introduce that special report. And then following, we will have Bay Trail Student Climate Update from Principal Sabine from Bay Trail Middle School. Dr. Maloney?
Thank you, Dr. Potter. Directors, if you would like to come to the table, come on up. So we have books to present tonight from French and English and AP Bio, so all high school courses. Our directors are here to share, and we have teachers here who will be speaking to each of the books. So I'm going to turn it over to the directors. Kumba Sango, our Director of Curriculum and Student Support. Sheena Conway, our Director of Humanities. And Kim Gephardt, our Director of STEAM. So as you present, have your teachers come up and can we grab another chair there?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you all for having us here today. We are here to speak about a French book that would be great for our French students. And with me, I have Julie Wilkins. I'm a French II teacher. Sure, so the book is called La Magie de Money. Oh, how about that one? Okay. The book is called La Magie de Money, which means the magic of money, which is a French competition or an international French music competition that our students here participate in. And the book is written by the founder of that program. It is at the novice high, intermediate, low level, meaning in between where students should potentially theoretically be at the end of French I and where they are starting to be at the beginning of French II. We don't typically, there isn't really a book, say, a history of reading many readers in the world language programs. It's not replacing anything, but it's introducing the idea of a reader, which is comprehensible to our students, highly engaging. It is, takes place in a ninth grade classroom in Maine. It focuses on three students, one with Canadian roots, French Canadian roots, and one who's an immigrant from Senegal. It deals with issues of identity, bullying, culture, just sort of trying to figure out who you are, friendship and support. And it uses a lot of high-frequency language, meaning language that is used over and over again that our students need to be really, really familiar with. And, anything else to say about that? Oh, I will add one thing, which is that we, I am starting hopefully to participate with our students next year in an exchange with students in Senegal. So it'd be just a little extra boost, another way to kind of get some of that, introduce the Senegalese culture. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I am, again, Sheena Conway, Director of Humanities. I'm really excited to be here this evening. We have three texts up for adoption for the PHS ELA department. Joining me is our incredible ELA department chair at the high school, John Baxter. And so we will be sharing, like I said, three texts with you. We're going to start with the first one. Thank you. So the first one is The Autobiography of Malcolm X. I'm really excited about this text. This is a book that we've used in lit circles in the past, but we really want to be able to bring it to more students, hence the reason that we're adopting it. So this book, it's really, it's a seminal text. It's by Alex Haley. Most of us know it. So The Autobiography of Malcolm X, first published in 1965, presents the life story of Malcolm X. Born Malcolm Little in 1925, he experienced a series of formative events, including the loss of his father, time in foster care, and incarceration. This shaped his views on race, identity, and justice. The book traces his rise as a minister and national spokesperson for the Nation of Islam, a religious and social movement that emphasized Black self-reliance and challenged the racial inequalities of the time. His perspectives on race relations, civil rights, and American society evolved significantly over the course of his life, particularly after his pilgrimage to Mecca in 1964, which broadened his outlook on race and religion. This book is set during a period marked by the Civil Rights Movement, segregation, and widespread calls for social change. The autobiography presents insight into the political and cultural climate of the United States during the 1950s and 1960s. Malcolm X's reflections offer a firsthand account of the challenges faced by African-Americans and the diverse strategies pursued in the struggle for equality. So again, this book remains a significant historical document and a key resource for our students to understand the complexities of race, religion, and activism in modern American history. This text aligns with our AP Language and Composition course, which is an 11th grade class, and it also aligns with the Next Generation ELA standards and the AP course framework.
Our next text is for the ninth grade classroom. It's called The Lost Year by Catherine Marsh, and it's a powerful historical fiction. It bridges past and present, sort of episodic in the way it's written. Part of it is set during the COVID pandemic, and then another part is set in the 1930s in Ukraine, doing the Halmodor. And it really is told in alternating timelines, and it explores themes of survival, truth, family secrets, the importance of remembering history. It's inspired by Marsh's own family history. The book offers a deeply human lens on a historic atrocity that is often overlooked in Western curricula. We really love this book for the ninth grade classroom. Cross-curricular connections are there with the ninth grade social studies curriculum. And we also have several teachers who met the author, have done seminars with her, and she's a really great author. And a lot of teachers are really excited to teach this book. Our third text is called A Little Devil in America, subtitled Notes and Praise of Black Performance, by, on a personal, my favorite author, his name's Hanif Abdurraqib. It's a genre-defying collection of essays that celebrates and interrogates the role of black performance in American culture. So Abdurraqib is a poet. He's a multi-award-winning poet, but he's recently written a lot of nonfiction texts. He has won many awards for his last three books he's written. But this one is, weaves personal narratives, so some of the essays are personal, and also historical and cultural analysis. From Josephine Baker, the essay on Josephine Baker is just amazing, I love it, to Mary Clayton, who sang on the Rolling Stones song, you probably could know it, I could sing it for you, but you don't want me to? Yeah, to Mariah Carey. And it explores how, I think her line is like murder, so I don't know. It's really, it's really great, but sorry, I'll continue. So it's how these artists have shaped and been shaped by the cultural landscape of the United States. It's structured in movements, so there's three or four different movements, and they're all thematically aligned, but it's essentially essays that would work really well for a class that I teach at the high school, which is a senior elective called Music as Literature. And so we could adapt it in a lot of different ways for that class.
We'll transition to the AP Bio text.
Hi, everyone. As Dr. Maloney mentioned, my name is Kim Gebhardt, Director of STEAM. Here with me today is Violet Wallerstein. She is our AP Bio teacher, here to present about our new AP Bio textbook.
Hi. So according to College Board standards, we need a text that's published within 10 years to be up to date with College Board and to be AP applicable as a school. So our textbook that we use right now is Campbell's Biology, I believe it's the 10th edition, which was published in 2015, so we need to update. That is a very dense college-level textbook. The students struggle with it quite a bit when they first start in my classroom. And this text that we're looking to replace it with, rather than the updated version of Campbell's, is actually one of the only textbooks that is written for AP Bio. So it is written specifically for AP students, trying to bridge that high school to college gap, which makes it a very unique text, and that's why I'm looking to purchase it for our classroom. So it is, like I said, one of the only texts that's actually designed for AP, so it comes with AP-style questions and AP-style resources, things like specific statistical analysis that students need to do on the test. It also has some unique sections to it, such as visual summaries at the end of each chapter. It dives into specific science investigations, which is a really big part of AP Bio, which is experimental design, looking at different experiments, designing the experiments, analyzing the results, looking at graphs, all of that stuff. And it gives a lot of that statistical skill practice that students need that's embedded throughout the chapters and continues to link back to.
Violet would also like to make one other plug, that we have a request for some...
Some adoption?
Yes.
Along with a textbook adoption?
Along with a textbook adoption. If anybody would like to adopt some baby mice, I have about 39 mice living in my classroom. They're very sweet, very friendly, been handled by students for the last two weeks. We just did a lab with them, and now they need a home that is no longer with me. Thank you so much. And now we are open to questions, maybe about the mice, but maybe about some other things.
Board members, questions or comments?
Yeah, a quick question. Do all of the textbooks that we talked about in here come with resources that support the teacher and also the students? Like...
I can speak to AP Bio. So AP Bio has a teacher book, and then along with that, a digital platform that we will be using for kids and students, for the students to access.
Our texts do not. However, we would always encourage teachers to send communication home to families, that these books are being used in class, and there's a lot of rich conversations that can happen between home and school related to these texts.
Not specifically, but the author who wrote this book has a community of other teachers that is utilizing this resource, so they have a collective bank of resources that we have access to.
And that's online, that type of thing? So you can access that through online and...
Yes.
Board members, anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you so much for showing up today and presenting. I'm always excited to learn about new textbooks and new literature that our children are being exposed to, and they get to just engulf, you know, broaden their minds, broaden their experiences. I'm excited for each one of these books because it's really important for our children and our students to see themselves in the books and to learn from history, right? I'm really, really excited about the last one, A Little Devil in America, because when you present a book in essay form, short essays, it's like short stories, and I find it's more accessible. And I speak from a personal experience. I was a huge reader. I still am. However, since COVID, I have a hard time sitting down and reading a whole book all at once because my brain is always somewhere else. So I have started to read again through short stories and essays. And I can only imagine that there are students out there that feel like this, so it's less intimidating. You don't feel like, oh my goodness, I'm never going to finish this book. It's like, oh yeah, I finished this story. I'll do another one. So I really appreciate the effort that you've put into making these books available to our children, and good luck with those mice. Yeah, my dog would eat them, I'm so sorry. Yeah. I'm good.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. Are you okay if I comment first?
And then I won't have anything to say because she'll say it off the bat.
No, I just want to thank you for the thought and the, that you put into selecting these books, but I also want to thank you for the energy that you bring, because when you love what you're using, the kids love what they're using. So thank you for that enthusiasm that you bring into the classroom, because I know how impactful that is for our students.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead. You go ahead.
So I had some questions, but I keep wondering, how did we end up with so many mice? But I have questions about the book, but I'm just like, how? Okay, so that keeps just distracting, like how?
It's biology, Aaliyah.
Okay, because I was like, well, maybe I can open up a mice farm, but no, I don't know. I think, so, you know, as a former student here in the district, I, just to even see these books on here, even the biology book, because it just, I mean, making sure that we keep up within the 10 years, that is a privilege. That's a luxury that I think that we need to recognize, that a lot of districts don't have that luxury. So just that, to be here and say, hey, well, we got to stay in line with the standards that our district can, I think that's, you know, a luxury that we need to, and a privilege that we need to recognize. The other books too, they have a little bit of diversity in them, you know? And so, and we know that that word has been made out to be a bad word in this time, and we know, but research has shown, history has shown, biology has shown, that diversity is a positive thing. But I do wonder, how are you all prepared as educators to, to address maybe some of the pushback that you may receive?
I appreciate that. It's a, it's a great question, so...
I'm here for the great questions.
Yeah, yeah, I love that about you. I think I hit Samaya. Is Samaya your daughter? Samaya?
Possibly.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
I'm her mom.
I know, I love her. She was in my class a couple of years ago. Sorry. Okay. I think part of it is how much our teachers have bought into the books, how much, how rich as texts on their own the books are, and the critical thinking, the media literacy, the cross-curricular connections just make these great texts to teach from. Never been one to worry too much about how we present it, as long as we believe in it and we live it and we love the books we teach. But I do, I think, to your question, I think that if you rely on the power, the subject matter, the richness that these have sex in the classrooms they're going to be taught in, that everything else kind of takes care of itself. I can think about that a little bit more in dress too, but...
I'll just share that I know our teachers are so appreciative, excuse me, of the support of our Board of Education. They know that the board supports these texts, and I think that goes a long way with being able to confidently get up in front of the classroom and teach these, with these texts. They know that they have the support of the administration, the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. But I think what's so powerful especially about these ELA texts, they come right from the teachers were the ones that recommended these texts. They wanted these texts. You know, our students have talked about these texts, and so I think there's just power in that, that teacher choice, that student choice, and feeling empowered to be able to do a good job because you know you have the support of your district, that, I know they're very fortunate and thankful for that support.
I'd also add that I think it's us putting our Equity Long Range Map into action by our teachers knowing that this content is necessary and that we need to put in front of our students. And so we are just living and breathing what we are expecting our kids to know and learn, and through their support, the teachers are, you know, getting it as well, and we can tell that they're excited about supporting our kids and diversity, and learning about the world and being able to see themselves in the content as well, so.
Yeah. And I want to say, just in my adult life, it's a flex. I've said so many times, when someone hasn't read a book, you didn't read that book? We had to read it in Penfield. And so even now, it's one of the things that I think that I am able to still carry with me, the literature that Penfield District has exposed me to, when you're out in the world and you're able to have a conversations, and folks maybe hadn't read a book in knowing, or even receiving a book in college that I'd read in English at Penfield, and so, and not having to read it because I already had the report. But, but, you know, I think that it's nice to see that that's continuing.
So I just want to add, although my book is not high literature, it is a reader and for learners. It does focus on two, it focuses on immigrant family or immigrant student from Senegal. It also focuses on a kid whose background is French-Canadian, whose grandparents have experienced issues with language and stereotyping and prejudice, and just reminding kids that the language I teach is not just spoken in Europe, it is not just spoken in France, it is spoken in, the majority of people who speak it live in Africa, like making sure that that is, my whole job is kind of making sure that kids do know about the world and they do see themselves in what we're teaching. It may not be as, nowhere near as deep as the literature that the ELA Department is teaching, but...
No, but one of the things that stuck out about your book is the fact that the culture, but also the names, and I think it's important, like I think, like Muhammad was one of the names, but normalizing these names too. And so when our students get around different cultures, it's a name that they're familiar with as well, as well as the culture, and as well as understanding that French is spoke in so many African countries. But I think, so that was something about, and also like the bullying concept, as a mental health therapist, I was like, oh, this is great. But also just having books that have these names that are not traditional American names, I think is also great.
Yeah, thank you.
So your book matters too.
I just, I love the sounds of all these books. I've only read one of them, Malcolm X, which is, I am so grateful that that is being added. I just think it's, what it teaches is just so deep. I don't think the kids will be the same. As far as The Lost Year, I remember saying to some, talking to one of my kids about the Haladamar, and they were like, the Halada what? And I realized, like, we don't know about the Haladamar. I just learned about it by mistake, reading a book many years ago. So I love it that kids will be learning about that, you know, what Ukraine went through, and, and sort of like what Krista said, The Little Devil in America, I think it's great to learn through essays. Another one of my favorite books is called A Call to Conscience, which is the seminal speeches of Martin Luther King. And so the things that you learn in little chunks, reading his speeches, is so much more, you have time to chew them and digest them as opposed to reading a 300-page book. They're all about all different topics. So it's a great way to learn a lot of history. So I think essays, as well as speeches and stuff, is a great way to teach a lot of things in a short period of time.
Well, thank you for coming. I don't need to say anything else, but thank you for spending this evening with us and sharing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to invite Tracy Sabine, our Bay Trail Principal, up to come and share an update around her school climate plan.
Teacher voice time.
You can use the table.
Can I use it?
Hello, everyone. Oh, all right. Well, good evening, board members, Dr. Potter and Senior Cabinet. It is my privilege, I'm very grateful to be here, May 27, right? We're getting close to the end of the year, to highlight Bay Trail and some of our key, I would, I would say, key progress in terms of raising student voice and the student experience. So it's our student spotlight. It's just me, but my hope is throughout the presentation, you will see the faces and those who this has impacted the most because they are at the heart of what we are working on. And there are three key parts of our school climate plan I wanted to highlight today that really center on all the work that the Bay Trail teams, and I say that collectively because the students are a part, a big part, of that team, one of them in particular. So I'll be highlighting our student advisory team, which is a group that started over a year ago when I first came to Bay Trail as the interim principal, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. They are an ever-growing group of voices, grades six, seven, and eight, who have truly helped with moving the next two topics forward and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our school community. So community building days is a hot topic. We need to talk about it because it's been a focus of so much of not just the work in our building, our staff, and our students, but the conversation with our student advisory. And it all blends together with our restorative practices and our re-engagement process that we've worked to model after our colleagues over at the high school. Much of the work that I started in my tenure there, we were able to bring over and through the work with our Bay Trail Restorative Practices Committee has been deeply impactful. So highlighting those things. So I'm going to start with student advisory. So again, the first student advisory group in its, in its very start was in April of last year, and that was me getting in the building, wanting to know more about Bay Trail, really knowing that the students who are experiencing our school community every day are going to be the ones to really tell me what's going on and what we need to do better, change, keep going. So that first group was made up of 15 students, all grade levels, a smaller group. We met monthly for the remainder of the year. We focused on, you know, really having key topics of conversation that would help guide our work into the next year, right? So it was a group that was together briefly for that spring, but they laid the groundwork for what was to come. And I do want to highlight partnerships that have made this so successful. So Maureen Mustafa George, who at the time was still working with the Children's Institute, who is now with us in Penfield, was a key part of that, ever grateful for that. And then just helping to bring back that student voice and keeping that going and feedback that I brought into faculty meetings, department meetings, and continuing the work forward. So that was where we started to first talk about what is community building and what could that look like at the middle school level? So that started in April, May, and June of last year with that core group, and it kept going through the summer. So just a couple of images, right? This is, there are two samples of over last summer, we're almost to the summer again. That small group got together with our Restorative Practices Team to talk about what is community? What is a school community? And you'll see that the students had time to process, really share from their lens, what does it mean to be a community? They belong to many communities. So as a school community, what do we need to focus on to build more, I would say, open communication in our community centered on student voice? And they were the ones telling us. And that image you see is the first two days of development of our Community Building Days that our student advisory was a part of. So really starting from the ground up with our student voice, developing activities, vetting it. vetting it. I believe everyone in this room has some connection to Bay Trail or had a student or a child go through Bay Trail. And you know, middle schoolers, they are a very key audience. They let you know right away if there's things they like or they don't like. So, we really wanted to make sure that if we're building community and asking them to be a part of this, that we listen to their voices. So, let's move into this year. So, now, we go into September. We have some groundwork laid. We have an idea of what community building will look like, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. But, Student Advisory grew this year to 39 members. So, the way students were able to participate was as follows. I put out an announcement, I had an interest survey, they filled that out, or they came and saw me, or they emailed me directly. And all interested students were accepted because we wanted to make sure we had as much of a diverse group of, you know, representation and different voice as we possibly could. And then, we also asked for club advisors to also recommend students. So, we knew that we had some key groups also represented. So, we wanted to make sure that we had that voice. So, as we moved into this year, 39 student members. So, we meet in the library now. We can't meet in the conference room, not enough room, but that's okay. We meet in the library, we meet once a month. And some of our topics have really led the work in the building all year long. So, again, Community Building Days, a lot of feedback, a constant process for our Student Advisory. I'm sure you've heard about the split lunches this year at Bay Trail. That was a very big topic in the beginning of the year, and our Student Advisory was able to go out and bring feedback from their peers and have a conversation about how is this impacting us? How can we make this more, I would say, of a comfortable experience for students? How can we listen to student voice when a change like that feels so significant? We also brought in a special guest, Mrs. Angela Dunson, our Food Service Director, because again, food, very important at this age, and they wanted to hear more about the choices and what they could recommend. And Angela was outstanding, came and listened to them, shared a presentation. They learned a lot, and they asked some great questions to have a better understanding of that process here in schools. And then, we tackled some other topics in smaller circles. So, again, I want to shout out Maureen Mustafa George and Kevin Marriott as well, our Director of Professional Learning, who has brought Restorative Practices, those practices into our Student Advisory meetings. We are often in circle, so we have that shared space. And we'll talk a little bit more about how we develop that in a minute. But, really wanting to make sure we can have students talk about topics that impacted them deeply. So, again, feeling safe at school. What does that mean to feel safe at school? This group told us. Where do they feel safe? And where do we need to adjust some things and make it more known what we're doing to keep students and staff safe at school? Harmful and hurtful language, it's happening. We call it out, and what do we do as a staff? What can we do better? What are students saying we can do more of? And we listen to that feedback, and that was brought into a faculty meeting this year as well. So, those continuous topics came up as well as others. So, the goal for this group is to continue to grow, continue to have that impact on Bay Trail, continue to lift up student voice, and also use them as a key group, and we'll talk about community building next, to hopefully train some of our students who will still be with us for the next couple of years, so that on Community Building Days, we will have students helping to lead those circles as well and the community base that we're going to be talking a little bit more about. So, that's coming soon. It's our next step. So, this is just an image of one of our meetings, right, in the library, a very well-attended group. If you ever came down, they would welcome anyone to visit. A lot of great conversation, and we gather monthly in the library. We created norms together, so this was important for grades six through eight to feel they could come together and have a conversation that was safe and welcoming. So, this is a slide that really demonstrates their words. We brainstormed some norms, and we come back to those every single time we meet because we might disagree, and that is all right. We may need to step back and reflect and take some perspective, but this group absolutely is up for the challenge, and they come every single time with an open mind and a willingness to follow these norms. So, we always bring those back every time we meet. That's why Mrs. Dunson came. We appreciate her. So, that leads into the next portion of the presentation, which again, ties into Student Advisory, so our Community Building Days. This quote was the first that we looked at last summer, when we had students and staff coming together to talk about community building. And I think it speaks to the middle school experience. And another, it speaks about part, and not the whole, value of building relationships, but really how, when we think about where our middle schoolers are developmentally and how important those key relationships are for them, how impactful just stepping back and building that relationship can be for them to have a safe person, or more than one safe person, right, to be able to come to if they're feeling that they need that support. So, the most powerful tool that we have for influencing behavior, and I would say, the school experience, right, as a whole, is the relationship that we build with kids. So, that's what we do, right, in Community Building Days. So, we adopted a model this year based on some feedback, similar to what our counterparts and colleagues at the high school have been doing for a while. But, we successfully lifted from the ground up, one to two times a month, a Community Building Day structure that has been successful. So, again, nothing is perfect in its first iteration, right? So, this was our pilot year. We're going to continue to refine, and we're going to continue to look at what we can do to make these days the best experience for our students and staff. So, we have had 12 days total between September and May, different topics, right, that we, you'll see them listed there. But, what these groups are, we call them community bases, and they meet independently from the rest of the school day. So, we have a modified schedule. So, the students are assigned in groups of 20 by grade level, right? They may or may not be with other students that they've already shared classes with, with two adult facilitators in each space. Those two adults may not be, likely are not, teachers that are on their current schedule, right? So, we're building an additional set of adults to have as another connection for them in the building. And they will meet all year long in community base and engage in a lot of different activities, which has been that ongoing process for our Restorative Practices Team and our Student Advisory, working to build that. So, different topics, right? We are working on teamwork. We're focusing on pivotal times of the year, right? Red Ribbon Week and making healthy choices because we know stress happens, and this is a key age for making sure we're imparting that onto our students right now. Gratitude, individuality, making sure we're celebrating, right? Martin Luther King in January, making sure we're highlighting different perspective-taking, celebrating strengths in others. We did this for Women's History Month, for Black History Month as well, really highlighting that and making that a part of our community building. Communication skills, activities that are, you know, nonverbal and verbal communication styles, it was a fun one. And then, of course, collaborative problem solving. There's an element of that in pretty much every single community base because it's important that we're developing that teamwork structure and having them build those connections with one another. The lessons are fully developed by our Restorative Practices Team, so they have been working twice a month all year long, summer work concluded, to continue to refine these experiences. So, you'll see here, many of the different activities, they create something as a community, right, in small groups, or they're competing. They love those. They really, they're very competitive, and they love the competition. They're building things, they're having different experiences, and they're laughing, and they're having fun. And that's what we found is the key for middle school community building, right? We can tackle the more intense topics later, once we've built that community. You have to lay the foundation of teamwork, of fun, of connection. There has to be some trust built. So, through all of this year, we've been able to impart different threads and topics throughout these days. And I do want to acknowledge, John Burke, our House B Principal, has been a key person in this process, along with our partnership with Sierra Daniels at the Children's Institute, really helping to develop these lessons with the Restorative Practices Team. So, I think it's important that we give credit where credit is due because that lift has not been an easy one, and they have been working tirelessly all year. So, again, that having fun. Here, you'll see that whether they're throwing paper airplanes, it's a stress activity, they have a lot going on, but it's all done with that same thread, that theme of teamwork and collaboration. So, again, we're going to keep utilizing Student Advisory to bring that voice to community building. We're going to continue to develop those strategies and really train our student leaders to be a part of the community building into next year, and we're hoping to continue to grow the group. My hope is that Student Advisory is never less than 39 members and that it ever grows because the more students we can have involved in this, the more we'll know we're meeting the mark of the needs of our students and our community. And I wanted to just highlight, again, this group. I've been saying Restorative Practices Team quite a bit. But, again, another part of the student experience that's key in our school climate plan is our re-engagement process, which has been a lift this year as well. So, I just want to say, Restorative Practices is built in throughout our building, a lot of our culture surrounds that, and I want to just highlight that to date, for whatever reason, if a student has had a disruption to school, whether it's an extended absence for attendance reasons, medical leave, it's a suspension, it's a removal for a period of time, we welcome them back with support. And so, to date, we've held 52 re-engagement meetings to transition students back. And the image you see is our re-engagement space that we hold very important in our building. That's new this year. And it's a space that's located also in our help zone, where our Center for Youth Specialist is housed. But, this is a space that we use every single time we come to a re-engagement. And this is where our students come with a family member, a parent, a guardian, they come with a trusted adult from the building, an administrator's in attendance, a counselor. But, we also have a trained Tier Two facilitator, who is a teacher or a counselor in our building, lead that and help support and bring that student back. So, it's a way that we're able to bring them back in a way that's built around support and bringing them back, knowing that we want them in our community, and this is something that we really prioritize. So, again, 80% of the time, we're focused on that community building through our Community Building Days, but we do have this built in now as part of our process that will continue to build, and this is our re-engagement process. So, again, a key part of that is making sure students know that we will always welcome them back. We want them here with us in school. So, I've been talking quite a bit. And there is a video presentation where I wanted to highlight as much as I possibly could about Student Advisory, community building, but our theme all year has been "You Belong at Bay Trail." So, I thought it would be best just to give everyone a visual representation of all the things and also a little bit more at the very end. So, I hope you enjoy this presentation, and then we'll be back for some questions. At the end, there was just a highlight of some other key things that I wanted to just highlight as well. But, I'm open for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Members, questions or comments?
I have a comment. Principal Sabine, thank you. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so very much. I've had three children go through Bay Trail. My last is in her last year, and I wish, I wish that they had this, this sense of community, this sense of showing up exactly as you are and being seen, and there is a place for you and that you do belong, because middle school is rough.
It is.
It is the absolute worst. But, knowing that our students have a leader like you in the building and that you are encouraging other staff and faculty and everybody to come on board, and everything that you spoke about tonight, student-centered, student-centered, you want to hear their voices, you want them back in school, how, you know, the re-engagement process, it's amazing, you know? And there are these hurdles that our children, our students, need to overcome, and I think it's easier for them to do this, knowing that they are seen and that they are welcomed. And dare I say, I wish I had another child going through Bay Trail, because maybe this time, it'd be okay, you know? Yeah, 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 yeah. Do you take dogs?
Yes. We did, you see the video. We love dogs.
Okay, lovely. Wonderful. But, thank you so much, Principal Sabine. I really appreciate what you've done for the building and that sense of community for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I thought, oh, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I thought the re-engagement, it's wonderful, but I like how it was normalized for its how it was normalized for it's for everyone. It's not just for students that are, but if a student is out for health reasons, you know, they also need and could still be a straight A student, you know? But they also need help for that transition coming back. And so it's it's normalized, this is support for all students and not just for maybe students that suspension or behavior problems.
And that's, thanks for saying that, because I think that is something that is like a common misperception. Do we utilize this process for suspensions? Absolutely. But it's all about like, there's been a gap, right, that we need to bring you back. And it's challenging to step foot in the door again, once you've been out for whatever reason. So knowing there's people there behind you that will be there for you when you walk in, and here's where you can go, and this is how we're going to wrap around you, has been largely a part of why that's successful. And and I would say, parents who participate and families who come to that, that's the feedback that we receive, is like, it feels so much better, right? Walking your child back in the door, knowing that that's that's what they're coming into. It's not just like right back into the classroom with that expectation. So, thank you.
Yeah, I really love the restorative practices and and the fact that you got a setting that looks like a comfortable setting for kids to share, and then they can have their parents with them. I think that's great. I also think middle school is a tough age. I spent my career in middle school and just just on the edge outside of it. And it's, it takes the people in the building to understand that age, to be able to work through all the stuff that is tough about it. So Tracy, you've been there now, I don't know how long, because I'm new to.
Since last last March.
Since last March. I I know you've been, oh, that's right, because you came down from the high school to go to the middle school. That's right. So a lot of this is new. You brought it with you. Are the teachers seeing a difference?
So I think having that, I felt like when we were even talking about the textbook adoption and it came up, right, like, it only works as well as those who buy into it, right, who believe in that work. So that is the mission, right? That is the mission of expanding this across the building. So in a first year, you have a core group of folks who are committed, right? And they're committed and they're they're trained and they're doing the work. Now the work is, let's expand that. Let's make that even bigger. So my hope is, what we are seeing, I'm seeing a difference in terms of when we reengage students, right? The community building, I will tell you, like I said in the beginning, it's it's a pilot. So we took feedback from teachers three times this year, whether it was through a department meeting, a survey, or a faculty meeting. We took feedback from students in a survey through their flex period, their study hall, through student advisory multiple times, and then we're going to do it again at the end of the year. I think the key is, it's it's a difference in how it becomes a part of our fabric of what we do, right? A year ago, this was all new and unfamiliar, and you enter it with trepidation, you enter it with questions, and you enter it with, and that was the bulk of my job and the job of those who were really spearheading the work was to answer those questions and to be the voice for that. Now, it's what we do, right? Now, it's taken a year. It's been a lot of work. It's been a lot of feedback, that cycle, but it's it's who we are, and that's not going to stop, right? So that, I think, the difference is across the board in terms of, you see it become a part of the fabric, like, yeah, it's community building day, we're all going to wear our shirts, and we're going to be there, and we're going to show up for the kids, and we're going to do these, like, we have a system. So I think asking if there's a difference, I would say, for me, from my vantage point, I'm, the feedback we've gotten throughout the year is the students have seen us acknowledge their feedback, the activities have become more engaging, they've become more fun, they've become less talk, more action, right? Like, that's what they love, is those those pieces of it. So then they buy in. And if the students buy in, the adults are like, let's do it. So I think that that's the key part.
And I'll make a connection. So I think about school climate, it's really how are our students experiencing school? What Tracy is doing so beautifully is transforming the culture for the adults. So this shift has been significant. And when I think about just how Bay Trail is thriving under her leadership, when we talk about, it's been a year. So March marks the year that Tracy's been there. And there has been so much that has happened for students with students in one year that really speaks volumes to the great things that we're experiencing in that building. And so, you know, Patrick, to your to your question, I want to just also reiterate that a year ago, we experienced harm in our district, and I tasked principals with putting together school climate plans. And those are based on five national climate standards. And the one standard, standard four, that Tracy does so well, it's the school community creates an environment where all members are welcomed, supported, and feel safe in school socially, emotionally, intellectually, and physically. That's the transformation that we're witnessing under her leadership, which is phenomenal. So Tracy, thank you.
Thank you. That means a lot. I appreciate it.
And I think that part with middle school kids is so important. It's not just an academic school. It can't be. When you're dealing with the the mindset and the perceptions of middle school kids, you have to be on a focus in that direction, too. And so I so appreciate that, that effort that you're putting in with that, and that the teachers are working that way, and and hopefully the kids are seeing the difference, too.
It really would not be possible to do this without supporting the staff. Like, they, they care about kids, they want to see them do well, they want to see them thrive. There's so much that I think middle school gets a reputation for, right, that we are up against from the beginning, but it takes a lot of commitment and heart to be able to wrap around this work. So I'm really grateful to the faculty and the staff that are, they're coming along on the ride with us, because it's certainly been a journey, just a year, right? There's much more to do, there's much more work to do, right? Because we know that it's an ever evolving process, and we know that our students always need more from us and better from us, and constantly asking how we can do that. So I just appreciate the support of the board, I appreciate the support of senior cabinet, I appreciate my staff, my faculty, really taking up and supporting me coming into the building, but more importantly, the students, because the impact is real, and you see that and you feel that at Bay Trail. So, thank you, everyone.
Just one more real quick.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm grabbing all your time on this, but we all make mistakes. And we have good kids in that school that don't necessarily know they're they're stepping into and making a mistake. And I just love that suspensions are treated with, let's learn from this mistake, we know you're a good, a good person, that was just something that happened that we all learned from. So learn from the mistakes that you make and just separate out that, yeah, you made a mistake, but we also know you're a great kid. And I just, I just love that direction.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Anyway. Always someone steals my thunder. But, thank you. I know, I'm gonna start going first. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all of the work that you're doing at middle school, at the school. And I'm excited for my next one to experience that next year.
We're excited, too. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Superintendent's reports?
Okay. So back to me with our superintendent's reports. I will share student and staff honors, provide a district update. We will hear from Dr. Maloney for curriculum and instruction, Ms. Perez for educational services, Dr. Kenny for human resources, and Dr. Driffl, an update for business and finance. And so, tonight, we want to congratulate an outstanding educator. Congratulations to Penfield High School teacher Edward Levine, who was selected as a first Inspire Outstanding STEM Educator. He is one of only 15 educators from around the world who were honored as excellent educators in the first program. Congratulations, Edward. And we have French contest awards. Congratulations to our Penfield High School French II students, who recently earned awards in Les Grand Concours, otherwise known as National French Contest. These awards were given in silver, bronze, and honorable honorable mention. Congratulations to our students. Young Women of Distinction Awards. Congratulations to Penfield High School senior Chloe Chen on being named a finalist in the 2025 Young Women of Distinction Scholarship Awards Program. COBLOWS Cares Basketball Game. COBLOWS raised $636 for Penfield Ambulance and provided 14 and a half boxes of non-perishable and personal hygiene items to the Penfield Food Cupboard through its annual COBLOWS Cares Basketball Game. National Honor Society Induction. Congratulations to the 88 Penfield High School juniors who were inducted into the National Honor Society at the spring induction ceremony last week. And then the next, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Perez to share this scholarship.
Good evening, everyone. So the Ibero Hispanic Scholarship, just to give you some information about it, the Ibero Scholarship program aims to support Hispanic students in their academic journey by providing financial assistance for college education. Applicants must demonstrate a high academic achievement of a 3.0 GPA or better and be committed to pursuing higher education. Scholarships range from a minimum of $1,000 and can go up to $2,500. So we congratulate our own Christian Burgos and Karina Gonzalez, who were awarded the Ibero Scholarship last week. Felicidades.
Congratulations to our students. Okay, I have just one update. Our New York State School Boards Association would like to congratulate our board members, Nicole Doily and Krista Can, on receiving Board of Education Achievement Awards from the New York State School Board Association. So I'll give you a little bit of background. This, these awards of excellence are for earning a Level One Board Achievement Award under NISBA's Board Excellent Recognition Program. At this level, you qualify for a Certificate of Recognition. This program is designed to acknowledge school board members who strive to continually expand their governance, knowledge, and skills. It is comprised of four achievement levels that are reached by accumulating points for participating in NISBA trainings, workshops, events, and activities, as well as taking on board related roles such as NISBA's advocacy liaisons. So I'd like to present you both with awards from NISBA on behalf of NISBA. Congratulations. And so now, I will turn it over to Dr. Maloney for her curriculum and instruction updates.
Good evening. So throughout this school year, I have been sharing Penfield's results on specific New York State assessments for, from 2024. And tonight, I will be sharing the 2024 New York State Regents Assessment results. And this will wrap up the data presentations, as I've previously presented the results of all of the 2024, three through eight, New York State assessments. So if you see my presentations before, I always recommend to anyone who wants to dig into the district's assessment data, to use the New York State Report Card. It provides a wealth of information in a really user-friendly format. I have previously provided step-by-step directions in the Connection newsletter, as well as during these presentations, on how families and community members can use the New York State Report Card to access and review the district or individual school's data. To access the district's New York State Report Card, go to data.nisat.gov backslash parents, and this takes you to the parent dashboard. There is a really thorough dashboard FAQ linked at the bottom of the page, and this FAQ walks you through how to use the site and the data which is accessible through the site. When you are ready to review data, type Penfield in the search bar, and this, the individual schools will come up, as well as Penfield Central School District. As I mentioned, you can review the data by school or by district. What I am going to show tonight, I have selected the district. So once you have selected the Penfield Central School District, you can then drill down by year. 2324 will provide last year's data, and you can review enrollment data or the school report card. Since we want to look at assessment data, I have selected school report card in this And once you have selected the school report card, you will be asked, what data would you like to see? And there are multiple options to check. If you scroll down to assessment data, there are two options for Regents data, annual Regents examinations, and total cohort Regents examinations. I am going to check both, so that I can explain the difference. So you can see there, I blew it up a little bit, because I know it's really hard to see. Now that you've selected which data you want to review, click Build Report. So similar to the three through a math and ELA assessment data, this graph will be the first thing you see once you have clicked Build Report. You also see an explanation for what data annual Regents examinations represent. It is important to note that this data includes the results of all of the Regents exams taken in the 2324 school year. So this graph is showing the combined results for the 2324 school year. That means the results from the August 23 ELA Regents exam, the January 2024 ELA Regents exam, and the June 2024 ELA Regents exam. On the graph, the yellow bar represents the district's percentage of students scoring each level, while the blue bar represents the state's results. With Regents exams, Level 1 and 2 represent failing, and Levels 3, 4, and 5 represent passing. Level 5 is mastery, which is a scaled score of 85 out of 100 and above. As you can see, we outperform the state across all levels. I know the chart can be difficult to read, so let me walk you through each of the percentages by level. So 7% of Penfield students who took the ELA Regents exam in the 2324 school year scored a Level 1, while 13% of students across New York State scored a Level 1. 4% of Penfield students scored a Level 2, while 9% of students across New York State scored a Level 2. 17% of Penfield students scored a Level 3, while 21% of students across New York State scored a Level 3. 19% of Penfield students scored a Level 4, while 18% of students across New York State scored a Level 4. And 54% of Penfield students scored a Level 5, while 39% of students across New York State scored a Level 5. The last set of bars represents the percentage of students who scored proficient. In other words, the percentage of students who received a scaled score of 65 or above. A scaled score of 65 or above indicates passing. So 90% of students in Penfield scored proficient, while 79% of students in New York State scored proficient on the ELA Regents exam in the 2324 school year. And there's always a table underneath each assessment data, which breaks down the demographic data, and I know this is difficult to read and that it's only a snapshot. The rows included in the full chart are gender, general education, students with disabilities, race, economically disadvantaged, not economically disadvantaged, English language learner, non-English language learner, not in foster care, homeless, not homeless, not migrant, parent in armed forces, and parent not in armed forces. Each of these demographics is then broken down for each level 1 through 4, excuse me, 1 through 5, and then finally, a column for proficient levels combined 3, 4, and 5. So some things to keep in mind when reviewing the Regents assessment data, not all Regents exams have five levels, some have only four levels. And so for those exams with four levels, proficient is Levels 3 and 4, and mastery is Level 4. Now remember, when we were selecting Regents data to view, there were two types of data, annual Regents exam results and total cohort Regents exam results. Let's shift to the total cohort Regents exam results. Let's shift to the total cohort Regents' exam results. Here is the definition directly from the New York State Report Card website. So a high school cohort consists of all students who first enter grade 9 anywhere, or in the case of ungraded students with disabilities, reach their 17th birthday in a particular school year, July 1st through June 30th. The year used to identify the cohort is the year in which the July 1st through December 31st dates fall. Results are reported four years after these students first enter grade 9. So let's break that down. So a high school cohort is a group of students who all start 9th grade freshman year during the same school year. For students with certain disabilities who may attend school until they are 21, they're included in the group when they turn 17 during that school year. So the school year runs from July 1st to June 30th, and the group is named based on the calendar year when they started. So specifically, the year that includes July to December of that school year. So this year's freshman, for example, will be the 2024 cohort because they started freshman year in the fall of 2024. Schools then track how this group of students does over the next four years. So the data that is on the 2324 school report card is the 2020 cohort. So students who started 9th grade in the fall of 2020 and then graduated in 2024. So there is a note on the data because it is the cohort of 2020. So due to COVID-19 and changes to New York State testing requirements, Regents' examinations in June 2020 through January 2022 were canceled, with the exception of the June 21 Regents' examinations in ELA, Algebra I, Living Environment, and Physical Setting Earth Science. The U.S. History and Government Examination from June 22 through January 2023 was also canceled. So just keep that in mind when you're reviewing the data. For the 2020 cohort, you can see total cohort Regents in ELA, total cohort Regents in math data, total cohort Regents in science, total cohort Regents in global history and geography, and total cohort Regents in U.S. History and Government. So I just pulled up one to take a look at. So for example, here is the graph for the 2020 total cohort Regents in ELA data. And again, I know the numbers are difficult to read, but 88% of Penfield students scored proficient on the ELA Regents, while 78% of students across New York State scored proficient for that 2020 total cohort. So as with all the charts on the school report card, there is a table beneath which shows all of the specific numbers where the data came from, broken down by demographics. So of course, we need to celebrate. So lots to celebrate relative to the 2024 New York State Regents' assessments. The percentage of students scoring proficient for the 2024 Living Environment Regents ranked number 2 in all of Monroe County, so out of 18 school districts. The percentage of students scoring mastery for the 2024 Algebra II Regents ranked second in all of Monroe County, again, out of 18 school districts. And then the percentage of students scoring mastery for the 2024 Global History II Regents ranked number 2 in all of Monroe County, 18 school districts. So again, this wraps up my presentations on the 2024 New York State Assessment Results. Lots to celebrate across the district. Kudos to all who contributed to these results, and a special shout out to the teachers and the students for these fabulous results.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to Ms. Perez.
All right, buenas noches, good evening again. So I'm going to give you a report out on the Cell Phone Policy Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the 40-some members that were part of this committee. They devoted the time to come and meet for two hours for three meetings. We started back in March. And this, you know, it was in response to Governor Hokel's, you know, proposal to the Belt-to-Belt Cell Phone Restriction, and in effort for our district to be proactive and preparing for its potential implementation, which we know at this point that this is going to be something that every district in New York State will have to have a plan in place to support it. But wanted to give you an overview of the work that we spent throughout those three meetings. So the first meeting, we shared information regarding the cell phone restrictions set forth by Governor Hokel. We discussed the research behind the academic and mental health effects of the cell phone use. In our second meeting, we spent time analyzing and brainstorming, reviewing our own digital citizenship policy as stated in the Code of Conduct. We also examined policies from other school districts and always, you know, gathered information from stakeholder feedback from students, staff, and parents. As of now, you know, we have Governor Hokel's Belt-to-Belt Cell Phone Restriction approved, but there's no, there has not been any specific guidance from the state. So in our May 22 meeting, we reviewed the Thought Exchange survey data. We had worked with Thought Exchange to provide a service to the, survey to the community. And as part of that survey, there were three focus areas. One was accountability, logistics, and digital literacy. And the accountability, you know, came through as, you know, stakeholders wanting to make sure that we have clear consequences that are communicated and uniformly applied, that the school can create predictable and fair environments to support effective learning. This clarity can help build trust among students, parents, staff, and uphold a sense of justice within the school community. In terms of the logistics, just knowing that, you know, there's going to be ways to streamline the process, making it more efficient and less disruptive to the school day, simplifying the process will reduce stress for both staff and students, allowing for a smoother operation and more focus on teaching and learning. And the last one was digital literacy, and that was more around making sure that we take the responsibility of educating and empowering our students with the knowledge and skills to use the technology effectively and responsibly. Because as you know, right, once they leave us, they go to, you know, college or career readiness, and they have their cell phone readily available, right? So we need to make sure that we have a proactive approach that can reduce policy violations and support the broader educational goals, helping students become informed and conscientious digital citizens. So at our last meeting, part of the discussion was to provide ways to collect, store cellphones and electronics. So the options that we explored were the yonder pouches. And I'm not sure if most of you have seen, but they've been used at weddings, at concerts, you know, other venues and other school districts have used it. And it's basically a pouch where you securely store your cell phone and other small electronic devices. And basically, it has a clasp that closes, and then there is a magnet to unlock that pouch. The other option is using the lockers that are already assigned to students to make sure that they put away their electronics. And then the last option that we discussed was actually collecting these cellphones and electronics at the point of entry, and then having an opportunity at the end of the day to make sure that students, you know, we distribute those cellphones to students at the end of the day. And of course, that's going to take some staff to, you know, work with us in terms of the distribution, but we will not focus on using our own teachers to do this. So there's discussions about what other venues or ways can we use staff to distribute the cellphones without having it impacting teachers. So where are we now? So next steps would be to continue with the student engagement. So I will be meeting with the High School Advisory Committee tomorrow to gather student feedback on the current proposed cellphone electronics policy. We will continue to work with Thought Exchange to create a new survey to provide the community with the options and see where they think that we should focus on in terms of the collection or storing of cellphones. Always, you know, being collaborative in the decision-making, analyzing the feedback to inform a well-rounded decision with the district and building-level administrators to finalize the plan and implementation strategy. And as always, having the ongoing communication, maintaining transparent, consistent communication with all stakeholders throughout the process to ensure awareness and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Two quick ones. The pouch, how does that work? Like, do, is it, is the phone locked, and then the, and the student carries around the locked phone in the pouch? And then at the end of the day, does the student sort of run it through something that unlocks it? So that doesn't take much adult help? Like, that's sort of a self, you lock it and unlock it yourself?
Correct. So we would be given, the state would give us monies to buy those pouches. Each student would be assigned a pouch, and the student would be responsible for the upkeep of the pouch. So that pouch is their pouch, and, you know, they would put the cell phone. We would have to verify that the student put their cell phone in the pouch, they lock it, and that will be with them all day. And then at the end of the day, they just go through and scan, you know, do the magnet, touch it, and then it unlocks.
Oh, good, okay. And then the second quick one is, I'm thinking that parents, including myself, you know, will need to be untrained just as much as kids. And I'm a little worried about school offices being just the onslaught of phone calls, like, oh, I forgot to tell Johnny that I'll be picking him up early today, when normally they would have texted, especially in the high school. I text my kids. I know in the lower schools, parents don't text their kids during the day probably, but in the high school, they do. So how, how do you think that could be mitigated? The school secretary's not receiving all those phone calls to pass messages on about changed pickup times, et cetera?
Yeah, one of the things that we, that we discussed was the idea of parents using email to communicate with their student. So students, you know, communicating with parents as well through email and having that as a venue of communication, other than, you know, the office. And also, we use, you know, Parent Square, right, to communicate with families if there's ever any type of emergency.
But I think you raise a really good point around the work and the education for both students and families. And so when we think about this shift, there is going to need to be some of the learning, as Ms. Perez referenced, with our students, and teaching them how to be responsible digital citizens. But the professional connection for our faculty, they will need some support, but so will families. And so we realize that, and it will be a layered approach to make sure that we're covering all of the stakeholder groups as part of this transition.
So are you guys still trying to figure out, out of these three options, which one is the, like, the first start? So I think that, just looking at this, I've been to, like, a concert where you've had to put your phone in, and I was thinking for myself, I know I spent the majority of that time in that concert trying to figure out how I can get my phone out of that thing.
We're going to be honest and transparent, right?
So I think, and we're talking about, like, teaching, like, the, just being responsible. I'm just thinking, like, the first level should probably start, since there hasn't been anything shut down from the governor yet, maybe starting with the lockers and then having steps to this. But I just think about how many students are probably going to just be spending their time trying to figure out how to break into those bags and, you know. And so, yeah. So that, that was my, my thought of just all the creative ways these bags will become destroyed, and the instructions are on the internet.
And so as to not influence this, I do think that there are probably pros and cons to all three, you know, just like with anything. And so, you know, even thinking about the utilization of a locker, we have kids that walk around all day with a backpack and never have gone to the locker. So there's management there. You know, we think about the yonder pouches, there are ways to get in them. You know, you think about collection, it's going to require someone to help to support the facilitation of, you know, collecting them and then redistributing them at the end of the day. So there's probably a place that lives with all three of these, that there's an option that might work, and then not so much. And I think that's where, I know that Ms. Perez is talking about that collaborative decision-making and wanting to have more voice from our families and our students to, and our faculty, because at the end of the day, we want to make this to be as seamless as possible so that they're not the ones that need to manage this. And I think that is also the intention behind the restriction, so that we can get our students engaging and interacting and developing them in social ways that are healthy. So still more work to do. There's more to come, yeah.
And I think with all three of them, probably a slight adjustment in the schedule. I mean, I know my high schoolers don't use the locker because the locker is so far away from their first-period class, but I imagine whether you're collecting them or putting in the pouch, there's going to need to be more wiggle room, especially for that first period with all three options.
Until it becomes part of a routine.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to turn it over to Dr. Kenny for an HR update.
Thank you, Dr. Potter. Members of the board, I'm not sure why most of the audience participation left for the HR update, but still going to deliver. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Stephanie Marsh. She is our newest Director of Student Accountability, Data, and Technology. She joins us from the Wayne Fingal Exposés, where she served as a shared data coordinator. She also worked for Mindex Technologies, where she led teams of trainers in the setup use and application of school management software. Stephanie's expertise in data presentation, data analysis, and technology in general make her an incredible asset to Penfield staff, students, and faculty. And I can tell you firsthand that Dr. Maloney and her data team, as well as technology team, are greatly looking forward to partnering with Stephanie and are excited about what she's going to do to promote student learning in the district. So please join me in welcoming her. She'll be here on June 16, and she was not able to be here tonight due to a family conflict, but is really excited about coming aboard.
I'd still love to give her a round of applause.
And there isn't a slide, but we're hiring. So if someone's looking for a position, teaching, clerical, teaching aides, teaching assistants, postings are up. Take a look. Thank you.
And we're excited to welcome Stephanie. And lastly, Dr. Driffl, for a business update.
Thanks, Dr. Potter. Not a lot of updates from the business office. How exciting for you. So just two action items on the board agenda for this evening. One, Patrick and Emily were familiar with this, but we had to put out a bid for track resurfacing work. We had three bids, all good bidders. We were happy enough with the price. So we have that for you tonight for approval. And then we also have a tax cert settlement. This cert settlement resulted in no refunds, so it's just an assessment change, and the town has already approved it. So we, as the next taxing jurisdiction, move forward with that. But that was it for me. Happy to answer any questions on those.
I just have one comment. Dr. Driffl, is it cert or surgery?
It's both. Yeah, so it's surgery.
Surgery?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the word. We always just say certs.
Right.
Trying to keep it simple.
I think it's fair for our community to, you know, get the full word, surgery.
Surgery.
Yeah. Sounds like a pasta. Thank you.
Yep. And as a reminder for the community, a tax surgery case is when a petitioner in a commercial setting challenges their tax assessment on their property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes superintendent's reports.
Thank you. So there's no public comment tonight. So we are on, thank you, 6A facilities. All right. Whereas the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District solicited bids from contractors to track contractors to track replacement services or for track replacement services, and whereas bids were received and publicly opened on May 15, 2025, and whereas the district's architect and construction manager reviewed the bids and bidders' qualifications, discussed the scope and schedule with the lowest responsible bidder, and by letter dated May 16, 2025, recommend acceptance of base bid and bid alternate, alternate, and award a contract for the work as set forth herein. And whereas the Board of Education determines that it is in the best interest of the school district to accept the recommendation of the architect and construction manager and award a contract as set forth herein, now therefore, the Board of Education hereby resolves to award the following contract, the track replacement contract to American Paving and Excavating. The base bid is $548,400. The alternate, the alternate, I don't know why I keep saying that, $86,400, and the contract amount is $634,800. The Board hereby authorizes its president or superintendent of schools to execute a contract and related documents on behalf of the school district in compliance with this resolution, and do all other acts that may be necessary or proper to effectuate the purposes of the foregoing resolution. This resolution shall take effect immediately. May I have a motion in a second that the contract as described above be approved? So moved. I'll second. Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? May I please have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approves the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? No, we need to say ayes and nays, I'm sorry. So you say.
I'm sorry?
So we have to do the ayes and the nays for the resolution?
Yes.
I, doesn't she call out?
I don't think you do. I don't think that's a real call, though. I think that's just for purposes of the minutes.
Oh, okay. Then we all said, we all said aye. Yeah. Okay, policy review?
Yes. We have two new policies for first read. I'm actually going to ask that Dr. Maloney just give a quick update as to one of the policies, and then Dr. Kenny can provide an update as to the second policy. Dr. Maloney, do you want to speak to the Title I?
Sure. So we recently were selected for a targeted monitoring review through the State Education Department for our Title Funds. It was our turn. And the, one of the things that, really, the whole process was very, very helpful because particularly for me, having not gone through this process, and if you consider inheriting the Title Funds, being able to go through and review the specific criteria that state is looking for was really helpful. And as we reviewed the Title I policy as it is currently written, we realized that it needed to be revised for a number of reasons. The title was wrong, some other information within the policy, it needed to be more overarching and more encompassing. So you will see, we worked with the Erie Boses and their policy recommendations, and so you will see the policy as we're proposing that it be approved for Title I.
So, and then Dr. Kenny, Title IX?
Yes, so similar to what Dr. Maloney shared, we have a Title IX update. Basically, it addresses sexual discrimination and how the district would approach, not only investigating, but how we would go through our processes to make sure that individuals were protected from sexual discrimination within the district. This is in regards to a recent presidential policy that came out that we're reacting to. So we're in the process of addressing that. As you know, there are some situations in schools where we would have to follow up in a very judicious and governance manner when individuals claim that they've been sexually harassed. So this policy provides us that outline on how to do that.
So we're going to present these now to the community as our first read, and looking forward to adopting these two policies during our July meeting. And then we also have...
Policies for second read.
Policies for second read. And we are presenting to the community our second read for Educational Excellence and Student-Centered Curriculum. We look forward to adopting these two policies at our June 10th board meeting.
What policy, it's just second reading and approval?
First read was our...
This is the second.
Second read.
Oh, this is, yeah, we just did the first one, and then the policies for second read, Educational Excellence.
Yeah, do we have any feedback on those? No, no feedback. So they will be approved this evening.
Yeah.
I apologize.
That's okay. I was like, okay. All right. May I have a motion in a second that the policy Educational Excellence and Student-Centered Curriculum be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?
Do we have to do policies for first reading? First policy, Educational Excellence.
Oh, we have to just do the policies. Policies for first reading.
We don't have to...
No, we don't approve those.
You can approve those?
No, they, they go out to the community first, and then they come back to us. All right, the vote results. So following are the vote results from the May 20, 2025 budget vote and election as certified by the inspectors of election. For Proposition I, the number of yes votes for the budget was 2,731. The number of no votes was 1,403. Proposition II, buses, the number of yes votes was 2,490. The number of no votes was 1,640. Both propositions passed. The candidates, Dr. Scott Wilson received 2,394 votes, Dr. Emily Roberts received 2,164 votes, and Susan Gilbert Collins received 2,068 votes. So Dr. Scott Wilson and Dr. Emily Roberts were elected to three-year terms commencing July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028, and Susan Gilbert Collins was elected to a two-year term commencing, should be commencing June, through June 30, 2027. And then election inspectors, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education retroactively approves the appointment of the above election inspector, who is Nicole Freiberg, for the May 20, 2025 budget vote and election? So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? We have no new business? May I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:18 PM?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? I was like, you are very happy.